The City Council of Connersville is now session. Please rise. I have the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Mike Bishop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody will please silence or follow our invocation by Reverend Wayne Blair.
Rather we come before your holy presence on behalf of this council and the mayor, very much in need of help, asking for it, asking for guidance and protection for this city, for its people. Hoping God that there will be cooperation among all the people who live in this city, that we would support these people duly elected who carry out the business of this city. We ask for inspiration for them, that they will be able to think what they would like to do, what would be beneficial to the city, and may we support them as they do. So God, we ask that you would look favorably upon this meeting, that you would inspire and that we would follow, and we ask it in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Would you like to welcome everybody tonight? We'll have row call, please.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Here.
Councilman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Councilman Nutty.
Present.
Councilwoman Durham.
Present.
Councilman Frank.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum for tonight. We'll go on down, and if you have the minutes of the last meeting of May 21st, is there any additions or corrections? Do you have now entertain a motion?
Seven.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's passed. Going down to resolutions, three, resolution 2832, 33, and 34. Rosemary.
Resolution 2018-32 is a reimbursement of $930 to be appropriated into the police telephone. Resolution number 2018-33 is a resolution to reimburse $26.14 to be in the fifth third direct deposit account. Resolution 2018-34 is a resolution reimbursing $818.51 and to the MBH of the repair and maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions on these, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt 32 through 34 resolutions.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Is there any more questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passed. Thank you. Go on to item D. Rosemary.
Pending ordinance 3424 is an ordinance establishing Fund 313 for the utilities over planning grants and Fund 243 Rivers Edge Fund to manage the use of monies.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, may I accept pending ordinance 3224?
Second.
Okay, you mean 3424?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have a motion to pass on first reading. Any more questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to suspend rules and go to third and final reading?
Seven.
Second.
You have a motion to second to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading on ordinance 3424. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we go on to third and final reading.
Seven.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass pending ordinance 3424 on third and final reading. Is there any more discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Carol, you want to explain these?
Good evening. We have two requests for handicap parking spaces. One of them is 1128 Fayette Street. The second one is 2030 Indiana. Both residents have presented letters of recommendation from their physicians. I'm just going to draw a poll.
Mr. Mayor, may I accept pending ordinance 3424, 3426?
Second.
Thirty-five, forty-six. Twenty-five, twenty-six.
You're out of school too long, haven't you?
Good.
Too long a summer break, Eric. Okay, let's see. Okay, we have a pending order, we have a motion to second, pass it on first reading, 3425 and 3426. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If not, is there a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
Seven. Second.
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading on pending ordinance 3425 and 3426. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, does need a motion to go to third and final reading?
Seven.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass pending ordinance 3425 and 3426 on third and final. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, go on down to item G, 3427.
This is a pending ordinance for additional preparation of $25,000 in MBH for other equipment and an additional $125,000 in the MBH paving and streets. The other equipment would be to buy the paver from Powell's Paving. In paving the streets, the law last year was updated where we have to use 50% of our monthly income in MBH and put it back into construction and reconstruction, and this would help with that.
Okay. Let me know, this is going up for a public hearing, so I'm going to close the meeting and open up to the public for a public hearing. Anybody got anything they'd like to say, speak on? No one? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go back. Council's consent?
This is the money we've talked about for the last couple of weeks, Greg.
Yes.
Just kind of distributing it, distributing it in the right spots.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we pass pending ordinance 3427.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass pending ordinance 3427. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, is there a motion to suspend rules? Go to the third and final.
Seven.
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to third and final reading on pending ordinance 3428. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? You're right.
That's good, yeah.
Thanks, Keith.
You guys are competition.
You were waiting more than she gave.
You guys are competition. I love it.
Okay, 3427, all right. Okay, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now, am I going to third and final? Okay, I'm going to the third and final reading on pending ordinance 3427.
Seven.
Second.
Motion to second, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now we get down into pending ordinance 3428. Eric, would you like to come up? And Beth, would you like to come up? Take two of them, explain this one.
I hope not. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Eric Moroz. I'm an attorney with Drew Simmons Bonham. I represent two corporations, one called Eastern Corp., also known as Hassler Textile Services. I also represent a company called Boers Incorporated, which is the former owner of the old Hoffman Laundry and Dry Cleaners over here on Western Avenue. I represent both of these companies in connection with ongoing environmental investigations and remediation and closure associated with their former properties. Both entities operated dry cleaners, dry cleans have gone out those two locations since the 1950s until roughly the mid 2000s. There's no dry cleaning going on at either site anymore, and there's no intention of dry cleaning resuming at either location. So what we're dealing with here are legacy issues that were there for decades. I'm here to talk about this environmental restrictive ordinance that's in front of you. Quickly, I have prepared remarks on a PowerPoint, but anytime you guys want to interrupt me and ask questions, go right ahead.
Okay.
Maybe you did.
Maybe I did. Well, I want to talk about a few things. Basically, what the ERO basically is, just kind of an overview of the contamination that we've seen out there, the regulatory status of the investigation and the response actions themselves. And I just want to kind of briefly talk about the benefits to the community of passing this ordinance. First thing, ERO basics. This is an institutional control that's opposed to an engineering control. An engineering control stops, stops the contamination, prevents people from getting in contact with the contamination through a physical barrier. An institutional control does the exact same thing, except through legal channels, either through an ordinance like the ones before you, or through like a covenant or some other type of institutional documentation, sort of legal control. It prevents exposure to contaminated groundwater through the ingestion route, so drinking water, showers, those types of things. It's designed to protect human health. It's limited to a geographic area that's set forth in the attachment to the actual ordinance itself. The use of an ERO is approved by both state and federal authorities. The good news is, is it's not going to require any change in behavior from anybody in the town. We've confirmed that everyone in the affected area is on city water. We've looked, there are no private drinking water wells that we've been able to locate. We're talking purely about future risk. So right now, there is no risk to groundwater ingestion in the city of Connersville. The risk that IDEM sees is, well, what if someone decides they don't want to pay the utility, and they decide to put in a well in their backyard and don't tell anybody? This ordinance exists to prevent that from happening and provides Connersville Utilities with the power to issue fines of up to, I think, $100 a day to stop any violations of it. It's a very similar ordinance to what a lot of towns have. A lot of towns have ordinances that say, if you build a new house, or if you move in, you must hook up to the city water supply. It's basically what this ordinance is. The only real difference is, if it's amended, if this ordinance is amended, or if it's dissolved for any reason, IDEM would have to be contacted. And when I say IDEM, I mean the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. That's the lead agency here. I want to figure out this remote eventually. There's a couple of, this is from the IDEM remediation closure guide, describes what an ERO is. Again, it's an ordinance adopted by municipal corporation to control the use of groundwater in a manner to a degree that protects human health and the environment against unacceptable exposure to a release of hazardous substances, petroleum or both. IDEM neither encourages nor discourages local governments from adopting EROs. I think IDEM wrote to Mayor Gordon a few weeks ago, expressing the same idea.
Let's read this before him tonight.
What's that?
Let's read this before him tonight.
Again, this is, this is from EPA, Citizen's Guide to Understanding Institutional Controls. ICs are institutional controls, play an important role when a cleanup is conducted and when it is too difficult or too costly to remove all contamination from a site. Most cleanups will need to use a combination of engineered remedies and ICs. ICs provide an additional level of safety and help make sure the remedy remains securely in place. With regards to these two properties, the, the former Hoffman Cleaner Site is under investigation. We have a remediation plan submitted to IDEM. IDEM has approved the use of an ERO as part of that remediation strategy. We're continuing to evaluate plume stability in order to make additional recommendations of what to do next. For the Hassler Textile Site on the other side of town, there is a mitigation system that's already in place onsite. So this is just, again, another layer of protection for the community. So the groundwater issues. So there's three contaminants that we're really talking about here. If I can get this thing to work. Tetrachlorethylene, trichloroethylene, and 111 TCA. All three are solvents. We've seen them in downtown Connersville in the groundwater. PCE or tetrachlorethylene is a very common dry cleaning solvent. Trichlorethylene is another solvent, typically seen in metal degreasing operations, use of a vapor degreaser, that's where you see that typically. There are some other applications for it. For example, print shops, sometimes we use PCE or TCE. Drawing broad brushstrokes here. TCA is a solvent, very common in metal degreasing as well. We've seen TCA in places where we've seen TCE, which would lead me more to believe that the TCE and TCA is coming from metal degreasing. We haven't been able to zero in on where that's coming from, but we believe that the TCE and TCA are unrelated to the dry cleaning operations. Again, PCE impacts, we're seeing at 9/11 Western Avenue, that's the former Hoffman Site, 700 Northeastern Avenue, that's the Hassler Textile Site. And then we've got this groundwater TCE and 111 TCA impacts. We're seeing it in the vicinity of 700 Northeastern Avenue, both up gradient, so upstream, and down gradient or downstream. And we're also seeing TCE and 111 TCA. We've seen it one location near the intersection of West 8th Street and Grand Avenue. So here's just kind of a rough area. I couldn't find a map big enough to show where everything was, so I hand drew this one. I'm by no means a geographer, just to give you kind of an idea of what we're looking at. Again, this is from one of the Hoffman reports, it's kind of a site location there. Okay, and then 700 Northeastern Avenue is in that location. These come from environmental reports that were in your information packet that we shared with you a couple of weeks ago. Okay, so 9/11 Western Avenue, we've got historic dry cleaning going on from 1959 to about 2002 when it ceased. There's evidence of PCE being used at the property. We've been investigating it since 2013. We've seen low level onsite and offsite groundwater contamination. We've seen exceeding the level of five parts per billion. Okay, so five parts per billion is IDEM screening level for groundwater. Think of it in terms of pennies. If you had a billion pennies, five of them are Canadian, that's what we're talking about here. Five parts per billion, it's a very low level, but it is a screening level, which means that we have to address groundwater, which is what this ERO is all about, is addressing groundwater. We've seen no exceedances of any other screening levels. The concentrations were seen onsite at this location, I think the highest we've seen is like nine PBV, nine or 12 PBV, and very low, just above the groundwater screening level. We've seen some offsite migration from this location, actually, we've seen considerable offsite migration from this location. I won't mince words. It appears as if the PCE contamination is following the sewer main. I don't know why that's the case. It appears to be acting as a preferential pathway. But we're continuing to investigate all the way down that sewer ladder, sewer main, to get to the end of that, end of the contamination. And that's why if you look at that map as part of the ERO, that's why that is such a large area that's encompassed, is because we wanted to get all the way to the end of where the sewer may be acting as a preferential pathway. And we know the sewers terminate at the wastewater treatment plant. So that's, that's the reasoning behind that. Again, just to maximize protections and maximize control over what we're seeing out We do have an approved remediation approach using this ERO, so this is from IDEM, so that's, that's really good news. The Hassler Textile, 700 Northeastern Avenue, again, we've got dry cleaning operations from 1953 to about 2006 when they stopped, stopped doing dry cleaning over there. Again, evidence of PCE. We've done environmental investigations from 2011 to the present. We're seeing, again, low levels of onsite PCE and groundwater. In fact, we're only seeing PCE at one location in groundwater at the, at this site. We've never detected PCE offsite, so it doesn't appear to be migrating as readily. However, we do see TCE onsite and offsite. We're seeing the TCE up gradient, which means upstream and down gradient. That's what we're seeing here. The property was just entered into the voluntary remediation program. We signed the agreement with IDEM, I want to say, on April 20th, so we're part of the program. Our consultant is Ram Ball and Byron. They're, they're putting together a voluntary remediation investigation plan right now, which will be submitted to the agency, and we'll take this through the RWP process and hopefully get site closure as quickly as possible on this one. And then we've got this kind of unknown TCE and 111 TCA sources I mentioned earlier. Then there's MW21, which is 8th Street North Grand Avenue. And then this area around 700 Northeastern Avenue, again, if you look at the blue dots, the dots that are shaded in blue, that's where we've seen TCE in groundwater, in shallow groundwater. Again, upstream, downstream, side stream, everywhere. We're not quite sure where that comes from. It could be related to the one over on 8th and Grand, we just don't know at this point.
When you say shallow groundwater, what do you mean shallow?
So it'd be within the top, top of the water table, so the, kind of the immediate groundwater.
So it's a water table?
Oh, gosh, that's a good question. Offhand, I can't tell you. It's, it would be in the reports that are submitted in your, in the information packet. And there is a difference between where we're seeing groundwater at, off Western Avenue, which is at a much higher elevation, and what we're seeing down here on Eastern, which is closer to the river. So it can vary where the water table is. Sorry, I don't know offhand exactly where it's at. And again, and if you look, so there's the green dot right there. That green dot represents the PCE detection we've seen in groundwater. Again, we've not seen any PCE migrating offsite above the screening level, so. Again, regulatory status, we've been investigating, the investigation's been under the direction and oversight of IDEM. Wilcox Environmental Engineering is the consultant. They've been doing a bang-up job for us, going all the way back to 2013. We've got the remediation work plan that was submitted in February. On May 1st, IDEM approved a risk-based remediation proposal for the site that includes a proposed ERO. 700 Eastern Avenue, again, investigation since 2011, under direction oversight of IDEM. Ram Ball Inc. is the consultant. I keep wanting to call them Ram Ball and Byron, because that's what they've been known for the last few years, but it's just Ram Ball now. We have onsite mitigation that's installed and is operating. On April 20th, it was approved entry into the voluntary remediation program. Ram Ball's developing the voluntary remediation investigation plan. This ERO is designed to augment that response action for that site. So it's all part of, you know, one big plan for both sites.
Now, will these be tested on a regular basis, or is there going to be a monitoring well or anything for them?
Absolutely. We have, I think, 42 monitoring wells already installed, and we're installing more. And we, we've been sampling them quarterly. So now, we're going to get on a little bit of a different schedule, so some we're going to stop monitoring quarterly and may go to semi-annual or annual, just because we've got so many wells now. We don't necessarily need to monitor every single one of them, but we do regularly monitor them.
Those are in memory. So they're going to Connersville Utilities?
I'll have to ask them. They go, they are public, they submit to IDEM, and they are available on the IDEM virtual file cabinet. So they are publicly available documents, you can look them up right now if you like. I included just the most recent round of published data that we had in your packet.
Let me butt in if I may.
Sure.
Following up on Councilman Nutty's question or comment. The Indiana Department of Environmental Management, it's their job, all day, every day, to monitor sites like this. At their website, they do have a feature called a virtual file cabinet, where citizens, the public, can access all manner of documents. And so the sites are referenced in the materials he gave you. Any of you could go to IDEM's website, click on the virtual file cabinet, put in the site number, and all of these documents, when Mr. Moroz tells you that these businesses have complied and have followed these voluntary remediation programs. I verified all of that before any of this was submitted to you. I probably read a couple of hundred pages worth of documents, just to verify everything that he's telling you. The reports do all indicate that although the concentrations of these chemicals of concern, or called chemicals of concern, are above testing levels, they are just above testing levels. These are not high concentrations. This is kind of a large geographic area as these things go, and that's why the environmental restrictive ordinance, as opposed to extraction or a bio-barrier or some other things, is being recommended. And so everything that he's telling you, I have independently verified through IDEM. The other thing is, the project manager overseeing this whole thing at the Indiana Department of Environmental Management sent Mayor Gordon a letter in early May, and I spoke to her this morning and told her that this ERO would be presented to you, and I was going to recommend that you adopt it, and we would follow up and let them know what we were going to do. But Brad Colter did meet with us, probably six or eight weeks ago now it has been, to discuss the history of the sewer lines in that area, so Connersville Utilities is aware of this situation, and we've already met some time ago. But any of you can follow up as far as these quarterly reports or these well samples. I think there was a total of 42 wells.
Yes.
And it is going to be required that that be monitored regularly.
Would it be a problem that when they do test the wells, that the, the things would be sent to the utility so they don't have to worry about doing stuff like that?
No problem at all.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Just go ahead and send them the statistics?
We could certainly copy them on any report that we submit to IDEM.
Brad, would you like that? Okay, let's go ahead and do it that way.
Okay. How long will these, those be monitored?
Until closure, until we see site closure. And then even, there may be even some post-closure monitoring required. It's really up to IDEM. Whatever, I mean, IDEM gets to call the shots here, they're the ones that get to decide whether or not we've complied with the requirements of the law, they're the ones that get to make the final closure decision.
So what's the timetable for closure look like right now?
It could be, we could be a couple of years away.
Five parts per billion, my goodness, I mean, that's...
What's the acceptable level? Is it five parts per billion now? What's the...
Five, five parts per billion is the screening level for groundwater. That's not necessarily a risk-based number. There, so what we're, IDEM is, what IDEM looks at is, are the conditions as they exist now and into the future protective of human health and the environment? And so five PBV is a screening level, that once contamination gets over that level, then that triggers a, a need to address it. Doesn't necessarily create a legal standard that if you're above or below that, then, you know, that's not really what this is. But it's above that amount, so that's why we're addressing it through our investigation process, through the remedial work plans, through the voluntary remediation program, and through this ERO.
So if it would go to four parts per billion, what would happen?
Nothing.
So the testing would stop and all that?
No. No, we would continue, if the level went down to, or I'm sorry, you mean if the contamination went to four PBV?
Yeah.
We would have to continue to monitor that to show that the plume is stable and not expanding.
Okay.
But we'd have to still go through the same process that we've been in.
Okay.
And this, I tried to read through this quickly, but it didn't sound like a plume, as we know a plume, in another contaminated area. It sounded more like it's spotty in nature. But under the wellhead protection plan, there is a one, five, 10-year time of travel for a well filled, which is east of 9th and Fayette, so I'm assuming that is south of that?
Yes, yes.
Wellhead protection plan?
Correct. That's my understanding. I know we spoke to Utilities about that, and they assured us we're okay with that. Okay, so, and I think your observation is correct, that it may not be a quote-unquote "plume", it may just be some spotty here and there, it's just, we're dealing with very low-level concentrations, and so it's kind of hard to visualize what that looks like too much.
I'm sorry, this ordinance just pertains to the two areas in question, not the whole city?
No, it would, it would affect the entire geographical area that's outlined in the ordinance, and it was designed that way, again, to account for the fact that the sewers appear to be a preferential pathway, and also to, to deal with the fact that we've got TCE, that we don't know where that's coming from. So we need to, I mean, the city should, want to, want to address the, the TCE as well that's still there.
And Diana, it's a fairly large area. There's a map on there that shows you the whole area this encompasses, but Mr. Moroz is correct, there's a chemical in there that, when these chemicals break down, they form certain other chemicals. So there's a chemical in there that does not come from the breakdown of these dry cleaning chemicals, so it did come from some kind of degreasing solvent, some other business, and this has probably been going on since before I was born. This pollution has been there, it's very common, and any dry cleaning site is going to also have an issue like this, so when it's discovered, you want to take action, but this has been this way probably for decades.
At the very least, yeah. So are there any other questions?
I guess, so who is paying for all this?
Ah, yes, well...
As long as they think the city, I think they're okay.
Well, both of my clients are insured.
Okay.
And it's voluntary. And it's all voluntary too, which means that they are being responsible.
We're being very proactive. Yes. We're responding very proactively and very positively.
Where are they adding the additional wells?
It will be south of, so right now, on the west side of town, we're looking at going further south past 6th Street and kind of stepping, we're going to step out and then step back in, if that makes any sense. So we're going to go a few blocks south where we currently are, which I believe is 5th and Grand, and see what we find, and then work our way back to try to define the area. On the east side, that'll be part of the voluntary remediation investigation plan, which right now I just don't have. I'm waiting for Ramble to give that to me.
So if the ERO doesn't pass, then what, then what do you do?
We're going to have to figure out a way to address the ongoing groundwater risk without it.
And then what would that look like?
I can't tell you. It will certainly make closure more difficult. And one of the things I didn't get into was kind of some of the benefits here. Again, addressing future risks, we're already connected, there's no evidence of privately-owned wells. But I think something that the city may be really interested in here is the fact that an ERO can help enhance and encourage redevelopment. I work with developers on environmental issues, and I can tell you, from a developer's standpoint, when they buy a piece of property, they know that if there's environmental issues there, they can be strictly liable for them. So they try to avoid those situations all the time. Now, this doesn't absolve anyone of responsibility necessarily, but from a developer's standpoint, from a risk management standpoint, you'd much rather see a risk that is controlled, either controlled through an institutional control or engineering control, or has a voluntary remediation approval in place. You'd much rather see a controlled risk than an uncontrolled risk. If you bind to an uncontrolled risk, you may be having to pay out money that you didn't anticipate paying out at the planning stage. And that's not a really happy place to be as your developer. So I throw that out there, something to consider as you're considering this ordinance.
There's another question. If we didn't pass the ERO, and somebody decides to go out and drill their well without anybody knowing about it, what happens after they start drinking that? Is there any lawsuit for anything? Has it been brought to our attention, or what?
As far as the city's responsibility, I'd have to turn to the city attorney.
Well, let me just say this, if you're asking me whether or not I think you should pass this, I think you should, not because you're worried about some potential lawsuit and not because these businesses want you to. You should pass it because there is a low level of these compounds, and because this would protect the entire city, and because everybody's already on the public utility water anyway. So you're not going to be making anybody, any citizen, incur any expense in the future when we're all dead and gone. This ordinance will be in place, and people still won't be drilling down where they shouldn't be drilling.
That's what I'm trying to say. If we don't have this in place and someone does it, is there any liability anywhere?
Well, potentially, and that's just one of several reasons why I would recommend that you pass it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Does IDAM, I read through this, I'm trying to figure out still, but does IDAM frown upon if we were to drill a well for irrigation purposes instead of drinking?
It depends on what the plan is for the well, how it's constructed, who's doing it, and obviously there's a permitting process that would go through there.
That could be exempt. What do they frown upon? Because I know, as I read through it, it's anything that's consumed, potable or anything.
Sure.
But then, address it in irrigation standpoint.
Yeah, that would have to be, I think that would be something you'd have to address with the citing and the permitting, and that would be something up to, I think, DNR would have to be involved in that, and IDAM as well, the county health department and whatnot. There's a lot of factors that would go into that. I don't think it precludes that from happening.
This doesn't specifically spell it out, that's what I'm asking.
Correct.
It doesn't even mention irrigation purposes.
Correct.
They may look at lawn care versus the consumed product that you're irrigating.
That's why.
Yeah, it's based upon the IDAM model. So it's no, it's not more inclusive or less inclusive than the IDAM model ERO that it's
Okay, is there any more questions, Brian?
I think that this is well thought through and worked well with utilities. And I assume that with the conversation with utilities, they also understand the potential costs to this. And if they think that that's okay with them, I would be okay with it.
I think legally, we're protected regardless. I mean, I've tried to read through it, doing it, understood it as best I could, but I don't see any liability on our part, once you get it in place.
You don't have any liability?
The part I worry about with this is, it seems like we're putting in protection for a couple of companies, and we're limiting potential property rights of others. And that's something that does concern me. So I'm a little, I'm not sure how we can justify those two things, because, you know, if somebody wants to in the future drill a well, now we're not going to be able to do that.
It could be by exception. I mean, couldn't it, they went the legal route and pursued all that?
And again...
They can to IDAM if IDAM agrees.
An ERO can be amended. Now, that would be something that would have to be worked out with IDAM, but if there is an area that we're, that's ident, for example, the entire northern half of the city is not part of the ERO zone, so that wouldn't be affected. Now, there may be some other restrictions out there because of the sites that are on the north side of the railroad tracks. That may pose an issue. I'm not an expert in that side of the railroad tracks, but that's not part of the ERO. If someone wanted to put in a groundwater well, and they were able to test to the satisfaction of utilities and city council and IDAM, and it would be safe for them to do so, then this can be amended to accommodate that. But there at least will be a process so that someone isn't willy-nilly doing it and putting themselves and their family at risk. So that's kind of the upshot.
I'd like to hear what Brad's got to say about it.
I'm in favor. We went to, we went all through this with them. Matter of fact, we've been interacting with them since 2013 in different levels to help investigate it. The thing I like about it is now it's being permanently managed by professionals. You know, we don't know the delicacies of all this in our field, and we know the generalities of it, but these people know it's highly specialized and they know what they're doing. Makes me feel better that it's being managed by people that know exactly what they're doing. And as long as they keep us informed of results, I think we were, after the presentation, we were well satisfied that it would keep people safe.
And you're comfortable with the potential costs to the...
Well, I feel like the costs are going to be absorbed by the, I don't think that the costs are going to be absorbed by us.
There's no cost to the city for this, not yet.
No, that doesn't mean something doesn't change in the future. I understand that. But as we perceive it now, it'll be paid for by the insurance companies, right?
Right.
The testing. And to get IDAM's blessing is even a bigger factor, since they blessed it, so...
Yeah, that's a plus.
That's a plus.
Yes.
So...
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Is this a standard ordinance IDAM has used in other places?
Yes, yes. This ordinance, a very similar ordinance, was used very recently in the city of Logan'sport to address, again, it was a dry cleaner, actually, a dry cleaner and a rug cleaner. So, yeah, it's very standard. Anything further?
Is there any more questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion? My wells are still suspended, honestly. I'm thinking what Gabe said, and I do agree with what Gabe said some, but also, I believe that if chemicals are in the ground and they're present, we also need to protect the health of the citizens around it. And as long as there's a provision in that ordinance, I read the ordinance too, but I'm trying to remember now, that allows for the permit process for an exemption. That way they can, can be followed, we can monitor. Someone's not illegally drilling a well, going to hurt themselves or their family, obviously.
Yeah, there's a, again, there's...
As long as there's a provision allows for the permit to go through that process, then if they're just, it's hard, I shouldn't say, dealing with IDAM can be difficult, to say the least.
Fair.
Obviously, you're a specialist at it, and that's what your degree's in, so...
IDAM does a very good job. They're very thorough.
Very thorough. I've had some diligence put that way in the past. It can be very difficult. I don't want it to be that difficult for a resident to get a special permit for something if their groundwater's clean or they want to use it for irrigation of their lawn or something, but they're not going to eat the grass.
The good news about an ERO, and this is different than other types of controls that IDAM will approve, is because of the Indiana Constitution, I don't want to get too philosophical here, but this is a home rule state, and the state will defer to local ordinances. Like I, was in the letter to Mayor Gordon, and I put up here, IDAM doesn't encourage it, doesn't discourage it. Municipalities have all the power in the world to adopt them, to modify them, to terminate them if they want. IDAM just needs the heads up that it's been done, and those of us who are on the investigative remediation side have to be sure that we can continue to show that all these risks are being addressed. So it's not so much an exemption as it is... You have free rein to change and modify the ERO going forward. So to accommodate other people's needs.
I guess the question you were both could answer, if someone want to come in and ask for a permit, do they take the council's blessing on that, since it's our ordinance or IDAM's?
It would be yours.
And as it reads now, the ordinance that was presented to you, and I would just say to you, I understand your point, it's well taken about your property rights. However, if the water under your property tested above the levels, I can't imagine why on earth you would want to have a well. But nevertheless, if you look at 1A, irrigation is included in water well, and then 2 says no person shall drill or install a water well within the area, so...
Which one are we looking at, Brian?
I'm looking at 1A and then 2, so 1A is the definition, and that includes water well for irrigation. Irrigation is buried in with a lot of other definitions. And then if you look at paragraph 2, the prohibition is to drill a water well within the area, which that would include a water well for irrigation. So a person, if they wanted to, for whatever reason, drill a well, knowing that they were within this area where this is tested above these levels, they would have to have this ordinance modified. I would only modify the ordinance if they could show over several testings that their water does not test above these levels.
Should we then, if we were finalized of this, make sure this is recorded to the county recorder's office, so anyone in the future owning property in that area...
Well, you don't have to do that. You're thinking of an environmental restricted covenant. So this will be in the book of ordinances, and this will also be forwarded to IDAM. That's part of our duty as the city. So this would be enforced just like any other ordinance, and it's going to be the law of the land in Connersville unless it's modified or rescinded. So it doesn't have to be recorded. That would, and I guess I should also say to that, the reason environmental restricted covenants were not used, as was used at the former Visteon site, as well as the extraction of bio-barrier, is because they would be getting hundreds of them because of the area involved. So it's just not a feasible thing to do.
So, may I see that back?
Absolutely.
I didn't get that copy.
I did have a question.
Is that the older version? This one looked real fast. I'm afraid this may be the older version.
Has the definition changed?
No, the definition hasn't changed.
It's not the same as we have, she just has her...
I, she, I was looking at what she read, and I didn't see it, unless I could...
It's like a whole bracket.
Okay, definition, 4B, includes irrigation is buried in there, and then look at 2.
I see it now.
Okay. Is it in yours?
No.
Unless I read it wrong.
Are you on the line?
On the top of the first two.
Probably the first is many.
There's 100 pages here, I don't know what...
Yes, there is 100 pages there.
I read it all, but...
It's on page 2. Let's go back to your...
Just below, it's in the 5 terms.
You can get a copy of it.
It's hard for me to read upside down, Chad.
I don't read upside down, so no matter.
It's under the definition of water well.
You can get a copy of it.
And irrigation is included in that, so just know that. I don't want you to think, pass something that you don't completely understand what you're passing.
I do have a question. So this should be closed within four or five years, you think?
I would certainly hope so.
Okay, so that means the issue should be resolved by that time, more or less, right?
Correct.
So should we have a sunset pause on this? Because I know how ordinances go, and they'll just be in there forever if it's not needed.
Well, if this, depending on, if the site is closed, that doesn't mean that the groundwater is 100% clean. So the ordinance would have to continue on beyond that time period.
Because I guess your time has to be zero.
Again, it's up to IDAM, but zero would probably work for IDAM.
Okay.
Ben, when you mentioned that you would not grant a permit for a well unless it could be proven over several, several testings that it was below 5, ownership of that property could change.
Absolutely.
And that's the main reason for that, because, and some of you may not be aware, so you have to be, you have to be very careful as far as...
Well, and the other reason I would do it, and I think that David and Brad would know a lot more about this than I do for sure, but groundwater moves and groundwater changes. And so that's why you have testing over a period of time, rather than just one or two tests.
And that's why we continue to investigate it, continue to take quarterly samples so that we can make a demonstration that the plume is not expanding, that it's either shrinking or staying, or it's stable, which we're going to be required to do in order to get site closure.
I think that, I'm kind of like you guys too, it's a long-acting ordinance, but it can be amended. I mean, I know, you don't want it to be necessarily in effect forever, but it can be amended.
Well, and there's the issue too, that if we don't pass this and something comes up...
It's going to be worse.
That in, and we've turned it and we've declined to do it, then we stand to be at least partially liable for, is that correct?
Well, yes, but let me go back and say, the real reason that you should want to do it, if you do in fact want to, is because you're protecting people from drinking water that they shouldn't be drinking, not just thinking about a lawsuit. But the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, although they can, it can be arduous to deal with them, and I know that from working on the Visteon remediation, but they exist to keep people safe from, one of the things is groundwater pollution. And they don't exist to keep people from exercising their property rights, although it does seem like that at times. But their purpose is to make sure that people aren't exposed to these chemicals. So if they would say that it was safe to drill a well on a person's property that's within this area of this ordinance, then that would be fine, and it should be amended. If that happens, it absolutely could be and should be amended. And you could do that in the future, but I wouldn't do that unless it had been tested over a period of time.
And that initial, and just to make sure we're all correct here, that initial determination as to whether or not the ordinance should be amended to reflect a certain homeowner, supplemented to reflect a certain homeowner who may want to put in a well, that would be up to this council, it would be up to this body. IDAM, again, doesn't encourage or discourage it. They take a hands-off approach. Now, they will have to be notified, and that could affect how this entire city is protected.
Exactly.
But again, that's really up to this body to decide in the future.
I know you said that you didn't find any wells, existing wells being used, but there are a lot of old cisterns. Is that, is it kind of affected, well, someone, a lot of cisterns you don't see. I've dug up several cisterns, didn't know they were there. How is that going to impact those?
Well, we ran a complete, we ran a complete check on all of the well IDs that DNR had in their database. We've also...
Cisterns are hand-dug wells made with brick, there is no ID.
Correct, that was the first step. The second step we did is we contacted the utilities department to confirm that everyone in the area is on a city water supply well. They've confirmed that that's the case. The few dots that we've seen that were questionable on a map, we went to the house, we talked to the people who were there, we confirmed that they were on city water. So that's what we've done so far. If something's brought to our attention and we need to look into it further, we of course would.
I just don't know how it would impact it if we did. I guess that's a good question. Okay, is there any more questions for Eric? If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass... If none, I'll entertain a motion to pass on first reading with a rule call vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, motion is second.
Thank you.
Rule call.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Nettie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Durham?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Okay. Passed on first reading, is there a, we'll just go ahead and pass it on, take it on to the, is there anybody who wants to suspend the rules?
Some of them.
Second, we have a motion to suspend the rules. Rule call, vote.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Nettie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Durham?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? To pass pending order 6488 on third, I mean, pending order 3428 on third and final reading? Rule call, vote.
Councilman Nettie?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Durham?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes, please.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, pass six to one. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. You got your flak day, but you forgot to get your name tag.
Take that.
This is the best last day, so we forgot to give her her name tag today.
It's not completely her last day.
That's right, I enjoyed working with all of you.
Job well done.
Welcome, David.
Yes.
Oh, you haven't got to welcome David, yes. You want to give a talk or anything, David?
No, I'm just looking forward to working with everyone here, and I'm sure we'll have a good relationship.
Does everybody have David's phone number?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, that's the first thing we'll need, Dave, so we can give her all of them.
Okay, no problem.
All right. Okay, going down to old business.
I have one thing. And we will be advertising bids for the Phase 1 of River's Edge, so that will be in the park. The Phase 1 is fully funded by grants and gifts.
Okay. Anything else, anybody got any other stuff?
When's that date closing the bids?
And we'll be opening the bids July 2nd, I believe.
Okay.
I have one. I would just like to recognize and thank Dennis Myers, our ordinance enforcer that's in place. He is really responding to pretty much everything I've called him on. And I appreciate it very much. Thank you. I've talked to him several times, I've never met him face-to-face, but I've texted him and talked to him several times, and he's responded, and I appreciate that very much.
I have talked to him face-to-face, and he was very, very-
Does everybody have his number? Does everybody have Dennis's number? Okay. So that way Carol and Robbie won't get the call on Dennis again. Okay, is there anything else?
I do have one question for our new attorney.
Okay.
If we have a situation where we have a yard that's, or a lot that's not being mowed, and it has Canadian thistle in it, can we go ahead and without, this person's already been notified, but can we go ahead in there and cut that down from the city and collect off of that, or do we have to wait to 30 days? Canadian thistle, I don't know if you know what it is?
Yeah, I know what it is.
Very dangerous.
I guess it's a prohibited adoption sweet. They used to fine them for them.
Is that taxable?
Still have due process.
If the government would find out about this lot where it's located, I'm sure that he would get a handsome fine, because it's a, it, it spreads rapidly. I mean, if a farmer gets it on his farm, he has to spray the whole field. I'm, I'm just not that familiar with the ordinance yet, but I'm sure there's an ordinance on that, I'd have to, I'd look at it. Well, the letter's been sent, he's got 30 days, but it's getting ready to go to seed, and it's a big lot.
Do you know about it, Carol? Do you know where it's, where we're talking?
If it's a lot, but I think it is.
Dennis knows about it.
I have contacted DNR on that, and as far as the Canadian thistle, and they were not interested.
Yeah, they don't push it like they used to.
I was thinking the-
Because it's everywhere.
Yeah.
For some reason, I thought the township trustees can actually impose fines or something on people who allow that to grow.
Because they, we, we were talking, Mike and I, we were talking, you know, that's considered pretty, you know, invasive, would there be, would we have to wait on that with a notification, say you got five days, then go in and cut it down?
I'm sure you'd ask our attorney.
Yeah.
I'll just have to call you on that tomorrow, I just, I just don't know the answer. Well, you need to call me, call Dennis, because he's, Dennis Myers, he's, he's our ordinance enforcer, I appreciate you calling me, I've been involved in this thing for the last two years, and I overlooked at it today and took pictures of it, and it's, you've got a manicured yard on one side and a manicured yard on the other side, and then you've got this ugly-looking weed that's treacherous, it's dangerous. What's, I don't have his information, I can get that after the meeting, I suppose. Okay. Carol can give it to you, I'm sure, or I give it to you, doesn't matter. I'll, I'll give him a call. Thank you, Mary, appreciate it.
Should we think about amending the ordinance?
Yeah, we're, we've got a meeting scheduled Friday to start on that.
That's a good idea, thank you.
All right.
I would like to mention that before our next meeting, Thursday the 14th, there's Belchwire concert in the park at the pavilion. I think it was in newspaper, like even today, but starts at 6 o'clock. And every performance that they've given and other performances in the park has had at the pavilion, always been excellent, so.
Yeah, and it's always, always been well-attended also.
So you pretty much bring your own chair, so.
And I'd like to both commend and congratulate the 2018 graduating class of Connersville High School, one of which is my grandson, I'm proud to say. And the commencement was Sunday, was really very nice, and I'd just like to congratulate all of them. I think they, as far as, Connersville is one of their Bay County School Corporation, is one of 19 in the state, they have the college availability of the college credits. And it was amazing how many kids have college credits. One of them had over 50 college credits graduating from high school. It might have been two or three, there were, there were two or three that had, three, three that had that many, because it was hard to tell from the floor, but that's amazing. I mean, that's, the money that's saved, the principal related that, between tuition and board and room and books and whatever, accumulated about $2 million that was saved. You know, and so that's there to be commended for that. And then one other thing is, I don't know, you know, it takes the Wall Street Journal, but it's kind of cool to have Connersville mentioned in a national newspaper. This was an article about a former resident who purchased a cord and was, it was the whole article was pretty much about Connersville, the cord's being manufactured here and whatever. Our early automotive industry history is so little known, I think, among most of the citizens, and I think we're kind of trying to vamp that up a little bit, but it's really neat to have Connersville mentioned in such a positive way in the Wall Street Journal, so.
And I believe come August, we, we have the Alderson and Cords in Dussenburg coming to town for a few days.
Yes. Like three days.
This gentleman actually said in this article that after his retirement, traveling to Connersville with his car, he purchased, he purchased a cord. This is a, he purchased this cord for his, for himself, and he, is one of his bucket list for after his retirement is to come back to Connersville with that car. So, I think that's pretty cool.
Okay, has anyone got anything else? Okay, open it up to the public, is there anything that they would like to say? Anybody? Anyone? Okay.
I wanted to remind everybody that, I guess you have all heard, we've had it all over Facebook, that we have our concert in place, Jack Russell's Great White. I understand it's not Elvis or U2, whatever, but they, they are pretty good for Connersville, that's the best thing we've had for a while, and we hope everybody will support it. And you can get your tickets on eventbrite.com, and-
And the prices?
Well, 15, we have some seats for 25 that are close, that are real close, I can't remember how many, but, so 25, a small number for 25, and then 15 for most of them. But we hope everybody will support this thing, the money will go to the second phase and beyond of River's Edge, and we just hope everybody gets on board and buys tickets. It'll be something to do, everybody says they want something to do, that's going to be something. And the money will go for the ball field, so we hope everybody will support it, and you can go, just look on Facebook and you'll see a link that you can buy your tickets on. And also, we're still looking for sponsors, so if any businesses out there want to sponsor it, give me a call.
And we can encourage donations too, if they want.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Brad, will you give me a copy of that signed contract too?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else?
I have one more thing. This is, the Friends of the Library will be having their semi-annual book sale, the 13th for the public, 13th through the 16th of June. And if you're a reader, it's a great way to pick up a lot of books for a little money. It goes, it used, the money, the proceeds used to go to just frivolous things, whatever, the library couldn't, you know, whatever, they just, but now it's going for actual books, it's going for their online books, and it's actually being used for that, so.
What's the date?
The Friends Night, well, the Friends Night's the 12th, but the public sale is 13th through the 16th, regular library hours, and Saturday's bag day, June, yes. Saturday is bag day, grocery sack is $3.
Hey, thank you, Dan.
Fill your trunk. Fill your trunk, right.
Okay.
That concert too is not just great, Jack Russell's Great White, you got, Jay Bales is going to be opening, and Jay Bales is from Connersville, lives in LA now, and I saw one of his social media tubes, or I don't know what you call it, they put, my kids do it, YouTube, I don't know what it is, but he is super excited, he's putting out to all his fan base, he's coming to Connersville, so we're getting promoted all over the country now because Jay's doing all this, and Jay's just not a local nobody, but he's a very talented musician, and he's willing to come open it up, and he's super excited about it, and it'd be good to have a local guy opening for Jack Russell's Great White as well.
Okay, is there anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
We have a motion, second, to adjourn, all in paper signatures saying aye.
Aye.